I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pledge on there and I have the approval of minutes. Are there any additions, subtractions, corrections?
I make the motion we approve the minutes as it stands.
Motion made by Commissioner White to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Colver. Any more discussion on the minutes? Not hearing any. All those in favor of approval say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Minutes approved. I think Marcy, if you just want to make like a pile at some point, you'll sign a bunch from that once maybe.
We can do that.
I mean, that way you don't have to know it's a little bit different than where you were doing it before.
I have stuff you sign.
That's fine, so we'll just...
Okay, we'll do that.
We're bringing the thing to maybe do the vouchers or something.
Perfect.
Okay, approval of the agenda. Are there any, any things anybody wants to add, subtract, questions?
The only thing I would like to, Kevin Evenson, can you ask me that?
Um, we could probably just do that, maybe under old and unfinished business if we want. Since that's kind of something Joe will probably have to answer here and I do himself.
Are we adding something else?
No, I just...
Kevin Evenson, I'll be the topic.
We'll probably just talk about it under unfinished business and then we'll probably let our update from Joe come in here and so. Any other? If not, will you take a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Commissioner White, motions to approve the agenda. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Everly. Any more discussion on the agenda?
Yeah, I just, I got about four or five guys that called this morning. They're coming in to, on some road matters.
Okay.
Mainly the bridge out there, the wooden bridge or something.
Did you tell them the time?
Yeah, I told them that one o'clock we do start doing the road construction.
So they're going to come in in the afternoon?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I think that's, I don't think we have to add that to the agenda. We'll probably just entertain it as it comes in, so. Okay. Well, there's motion to second. Any more discussion on the agenda? Not hearing any. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Agenda approved, so. Okay, we're on an old and unfinished business. Well, I guess the first thing would probably be Kevin Evenson's issue since Commissioner Everly brought it up. So Joe, do you have any kind of an update or?
Yeah, that trash incorporated, this area will be interested in, and they said they would, but they couldn't get started on the redways, so he seemed kind of keeping posted. In the meantime, Kevin's, knows he's, you know, he's been trying to clean it up. I told him at any time, as soon as we find somebody that's available, they're going to go take care of that, you know, we've got a court order to do it, so.
Mm-hmm.
But, kind of wanting a trash incorporated chance, because he seemed like he was willing to do it, able to do it, and equipped and had the, of the situation, plus he's local, but it's probably going to be maybe a month or two before he's ready, so. Just, you guys want me to look elsewhere, try to, or for any part of it?
I guess I really don't have an issue with waiting for a moment.
I don't think you'll find anyone that'll do it sure either.
Probably not.
I mean, everybody's busy. I think that's fine.
Yeah, to get someone to come from forty, fifty miles away would probably be a month or two anyway, so.
Yeah, exactly.
Just proceed with that, probably be fine.
Yeah.
Um, is there anybody that's going to be working with them? Or like, should we designate someone to just kind of oversee it, I guess, so they're not just out on a limb?
Well, it's the part of the syllable.
Well, that's what I'm wondering.
I don't, I don't, I haven't really had any further involvement with them. I don't think they'd be willing to or not, because they don't really want to go up to that U.S. property, which makes sense, I'm a tactical, without a history of work. But the law, law enforcement would be there, very, you know, while they're cleaning it all, there would be a new system. There'd be somebody else there, at least a documented one, so.
Well, I guess just keep us updated as we find information about it.
Absolutely.
Okay. Marlis, is there anything under old and unfinished business?
If you can take Craig.
Okay.
Wait, so. I got some old business here.
Okay, well, we'll take Craig quick, because we want to get him out of here, so we'll take Craig quick.
Good morning, gentlemen. How's everybody doing today?
Good, Greg.
Good. Okay, I'm kind of mocking myself here a little bit. What I'm looking at doing is for how these tables are set up, trying to get them more uniform and wind up with how these tables already are up here, so it's kind of matching these tables, and then getting some set up with trash, so it matches out, and then this way, there are going to be more of truffles oil drips, so it's going to bring more attention to the focus of who's standing here. And so, I've got a quote from our I for $1,277 to both of them tables for that.
And so, for... Well, that's the one we have here, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. I've seen that.
And so, pretty much what this will do is just see if you, if you gentlemen want to move forward with doing that.
Well, I guess the big question is to see if we want to keep that meeting up here.
I can't ever do that kind of thing.
Well, see, that's what I was wondering, is if everybody's going to be happy with that meeting.
Yeah, I can't even hardly hear.
I, yeah, I, I wouldn't wait, because I, I, I'm not too crazy about it, because I got a feeling it's going to be a, here it is here in here.
Yeah, I can hardly hear, my phone's not feeling good either.
Yeah, no.
Oh, that has a little bit to do with it, it's more in the air.
Yeah, I've been with those microphones. Most speakers are above, or up there. There's no speakers on this side, so it's probably the microphone, most of the speakers back, over the keys back there.
I just think we should try it for a more physicality, before we make any other changes.
I was kind of thinking the same thing, because I hate to go buy a table or something and then, uh, two later we decide we ought to go back downstairs or something.
I, I...
I think this is a good idea, if we're going to continue.
I, I wholeheartedly agree that's the original, I got the quotes put together for this, for everybody, just so this way that we, we have an idea of where, if we continue with that, we know we're going to sit and have our comments around.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. Do you guys miss your drawers? Will you miss your drawers? If you will, if you're going to, if we're going to stay up here, we're going to have Raffray to do something, I think we should have drawers put in.
That'd probably be a good idea, too, now, if you're going to have the table built.
Okay.
Maybe the drawers, like the downstairs one.
Sure, or, or maybe we need to do something like, let's say, like a little file cabinet or something like that, that we're...
Something.
That we can get some put together for hand now.
I'd say for now, just keep it in our back pocket and see how this stands out first.
Okay, sounds good. That works for me, everybody.
Okay.
Anything else we have? All right, thank you very much.
Thanks, Greg. Okay, Gary, go ahead.
Okay, what I have, what I want to address here is, uh, the folder that we received from Francis last month about employee information is information we already went over with in November. We discussed those details and addressed everything back in November. We did it with HR, I called HR, lady up, Pam, and I talked to her about she, that it, it's everything you guys addressed, it should be done with, and there's no reason to go over the material anymore, because we have gone over it, and it's old business, and it has been addressed and taken care of. We need to move on from it and drop the issue of it and move on, because it's over with. She says, uh, basically said that anything that Frac- Francis has done, all of the information he gave to you guys is all old business, and the only information that you should be concerned about is new information from our new road superintendent. So, I just want to address that. And the other thing I'd like to add to that, at, in, in my opinion, this material should stay in the courthouse. If you want to see the material, you come up, it is open to the public, so all the public has to do is contact the auditor's office and they can come up and see it. Commissioners should not be handing out material pertaining to employees to the public. And that's why, in my opinion, it should stay here in the courthouse. If somebody wants to see it, they contact the auditor and they can come up and see it. But, like I said, HR lady and everybody up said, this is a done deal, it's old business, and we need to drop it and move on.
Well, I talked to Pam, too, and she, she never, she never said that to me.
She told me that.
She said, uh, you know, that's, he said, she said, you know, actually, that you shouldn't even be working here anymore, and most other places would be. And we never, we didn't say we addressed it, we never addressed it.
Yeah, we did, back in November.
How much, what did we, what did we decide to do? How much money was taken? And how much, how much money was gone?
We, we addressed it. You can't prove that anything was taken. We, we went with that before. It's a, we don't know if he worked it or not. It's our, our opinion that, you know?
Yeah, but he had, he had, he could prove, he could, uh, come up with, where he, where is all this time, this money that, that was, you know?
He, he did come up with that he, we'd worked it here and there.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, we could do the same thing now. Whoever makes the most money now, we could say, hey, how come you're making more money now than this person?
Well, that time we had him in, when me and Aaron and Francis sat down with him, we asked him, okay, Al, can you account for this? And he could not account for it. Yeah, I hit a couple hours here, a couple hours there.
Sometimes when you're, you're approached at this very moment, you, you know, your mind isn't quite clear. You need time to think about it, to, to address things.
Well, we told him, you can go home and get all the information you need to, to bring it back to the county, to bring it back to the people. So, if you can count for this time, you can count for it.
Well, she told me that it's old business, it's been addressed since, we need to move on.
And I guess I just think, you know, that's a lot of, that's a lot of dollars, taxpayers' money. It's not fair to, it's not fair to the taxpayers, and it's not fair to all the other employees.
I just think we need to move on from this.
Well, I guess just to add my two cents to the conversation, I think a couple of things. One, um, you know, Francis is a former employee, you know, in the packets there were stuff about former employees in there, too. I mean, they're not here no more, Francis isn't here no more, so, I mean, it's information to take into advisory, but, uh, you know, I would agree that the current road superintendent's opinion on the employees is probably more relevant. Um, the other thing about it, too, that, you know, I know we've talked about it, Donnie, too, and Steph, we will, we've all had about it, is, um, you know, the old way of doing the paperwork was not very good. I mean, Francis totally reshaped that. Like, going forward, now the time is tracked much more accurately, there's a lot more due diligence on these time cards and stuff, and, and so I don't think that's going to continue, you know. I mean, it's probably a lot easier to answer these questions, where the old way was, they were coming in, some guys were filling their time cards one way or the other, you know, so I think we've addressed that issue and probably fixed it, too. So I think in the long run, I mean, there's just some things you're just going to have to chop up to, it was a bad way of doing things, and, you know, the old superintendents and everybody weren't probably watching it as clearly either, so. And like I said, when we have these time discrepancies, there's no guarantee that these guys weren't working, they just weren't tracking their time as accurately, too. So, just because the time wasn't tracked doesn't mean they weren't working. It also isn't good that they can't count for that time either, so that's why we fixed, you know, we fixed the glitch by making them record things more accurately. And I think another thing is, I talked to John Ibach, too, about, we talked about that cell phone check-in, or the automated time, where they have to check in and check out, it's part of the system. That's still moving forward, I don't know when the time, you know, but that's going to address a lot of these issues on where they were working, how long they worked it, you know, hopefully we can start tracking this stuff even more accurately, so, um, you know, I would say for now, we found an issue, we corrected it the best we can, let's just move forward with it, I think that's just what we're going to have to do, so.
As a taxpayer, I don't, I don't feel right by doing that, I guess. I just, I mean, what do we address? We didn't really address it, my opinion.
I know, but it's like we had talked about before, how do you address it? What's the right way to address it?
Well, I'll help him come in and explain to, or if he could break down his time, or account for his time.
Right, I understand that, but like we talked about, I mean, his own road superintendent's weren't even making him account for that time until Francis came in. I mean, you can...
Okay, since Francis came in, though, there was thirty some hundred dollars there, because time clock was bad, that wasn't accounted for, that he couldn't account for, so we got to...
Yeah, well, I mean, I mean, if you want to go that way, we did put him on probation. I mean, he, he did receive a pay adjustment for that, too. I mean, at some point, you have to just decide either, I mean, we either have to move on from it, or we have to do something else. I mean, there's only really one other route to do, and that's terminate him. So, either, you can't keep punishing someone for something that they did or didn't do. So, I mean, we've levied a punishment according to our employee handbook, and he seemed to be a good employee since then, so I don't really know what else to really do about it, so. I guess that's my opinion, anybody else wants to add in on it? Otherwise, I, I agree with Commissioner Holman, the fact that it's just time to move forward with it and start addressing new issues and let the old ones go away, so.
Did Francis sign off on that, on this call? Did he sign, did he resign her?
Now, do we get Francis's letter of resignation?
Yeah.
That I don't know.
He didn't. He said he was going to turn it in once.
I never received it.
We'll have to get that from him, so. I thought that was going to get turned in with the reviews, that was the agreement, so, I'll have to check in about it. Okay. Well, it's nine fifteen, so we'll go on to, uh, the, well, Dan Emdey's on here, but Commissioner Holman, you're going to be bringing it forward?
Yeah, okay. Dan Emdey couldn't make it. He, uh, last time he was here, they were talking about cementing that whole boulevard, which would have been around fifty thousand. And then, so they came up with another idea, they talked to somebody else. What they're going to try to, now, first, is, uh, landscape and put rock in there, which would be around ten thousand, and see if that works. And then he said, you know, we just put the cost right there, but if they have to go back, if it doesn't work and they got to go cementing it, the most our cost will be, that we had agreed to, is twenty-five thousand. We won't have to pay any more than that. Even if the costs are higher, that's the most we ever have to pay. But right now, we're looking at only five thousand, hopefully that works, and...
So you're talking five thousand now, and twenty thousand later?
Twenty thousand later, yeah. We had agreed to the twenty-five thousand, but the most, that will be the most coming out of our pocket, you know, so. That's what they're going to try, and hopefully it works, so.
So is the idea with, doing this, a cheaper idea, the fact that you could, like, piggyback the other project off of it? Like, it's the same kind of dirt work that was going to be done before?
Well, I think they would be able to do that, yeah.
Right, so we're not, like, redoing it?
It won't be quite, yeah, it probably won't be as much, you know?
Sure.
But, you know, you should be able to just remove the rock and then just, you know, because you're going to have to put fill in now already, so, yeah.
Right. Well, I mean, I guess if they have a cheaper alternative that they, you know, they think is going to work, I don't know. I'm kind of hesitant on that, just to the fact that the, I mean, there's already some rock and dirt and everything there.
But they should be using a fabric. If they put a fabric underlay in, a fabric will keep the soil from washing.
He's like, do they know who's going to be doing their work, or?
He...
Like, is the city doing it themselves, or?
No, the city isn't doing it.
Okay.
They got somebody else doing it, yeah.
Okay.
And I'm not sure who it was doing, you know?
It's not Chris Rourke, then? Like, we, because we agreed before that?
I don't know if Chris was, he didn't give me the name.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, he didn't tell me. He just said they got it, you know, talked to, over and come up with this idea. Because I, I'm worried, too, you know, unless they get fabric...
They got to put a fabric down, that's the only way you're going to hold the soil.
Otherwise, I was worried about it, why, you know, it's still washing out between the rocks and everything else, but, uh, you know, and I'll visit with them to make sure they do put fabric.
You suggest it, you know?
And, and go from there, yeah.
I guess my other question, too, is, I mean, part of the reason for doing that was to alleviate the maintenance, like the mowing and stuff, that doesn't, I mean, even like with rock, there you're going to...
But fabric will keep...
Were they, I don't know, what are they thinking, they would just probably spray it then, or something, then, rather than mow it?
Well, after a while, you know, red wood wouldn't act, but a fabric should keep it from growing through.
Well, I mean, over time, you're going to start getting things growing on top of the fabric. I mean, just, one of the issues was that they didn't want to have to mow it and stuff, I mean, they must have some...
Well, it would, yeah, wash it out there, but that hole was not going to wash it out.
It's just going to leave bare rock there, and then they probably could just spray it.
His power poles have been moved, I walked over here, and they moved them already.
You know, I, I mean, I guess, we committed to the twenty-five thousand to fix it. If they try a smaller project first, and it doesn't work, and they go into a bigger one, and, I mean, we're committed for the same amount, I guess, I don't really see...
Yeah, nothing more, come, we'll come on our...
And if they do a smaller project and it works, then you save a bunch of money, I guess, I, it's probably worth a try, and I'm kind of curious what their plan is, though. I mean, that's the only thing, because I know, I know part of that filled out of rock and dirt and already, and it was washed, and so I'm kind of curious if they have a different idea. When do they think they want to start, or do they?
Well, they want to start here pretty soon, I know.
I mean, it's...
Because they want to get it done before winter.
Right.
You know, but I, I'll visit with them more about it and stuff like that, but that's what the plans are right now.
Okay. Well, I guess if they want to try a lesser alternative to see if it works, I guess I'm not really against it, and... All right, um, anybody here from the airport authority? I suppose not.
God is outside.
What's that?
God is outside, I think he is.
Oh, well, we're a little ahead, so I suppose we can just... How about this approval for the banks? Can we do that, Marcy?
Sure. And, but that's about, um, a while back I had you guys remove Kayla and Helen from, like, B and C Bank. I should have had you do it to Strasburg, the Hazleton, and the Hometown Credit Union also.
Oh.
So, I just, I just need approval to remove Helen and Kayla, and add Lisa and Ardella to the Hometown Credit Union, um, Hazleton Bank and the Strasburg State Bank.
You just need that for minutes, so you can take...
Yeah, because the banks need that.
Okay, so, we need a motion to remove Kayla Anderson and Helen Ratchler, and add Ardella Dice, and...
And Lisa Upturnis.
And Lisa Turnus.
Because I'm already on there, so that...
Right, and that, to the Strasburg State Bank, the Hometown Credit Union, and the Bank of Ailish.
Yes, yes.
I'll make the motion.
Commissioner Everly makes that motion. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner White. Any more discussion? Basically seems to just be a housekeeping issue, so.
Yeah.
Not hearing any more discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passed.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a, a document here. Um, this is in regards to the MOA that we have at North Dakota State Radio for nine-one-one services.
Okay.
That I'll have you look at, and just requires your signature on the bottom. This is just basically what we previously discussed, as far as the upcoming fees for the next biennium, a dollar fifty-one per line, so.
Anybody else want to look at it, or? Okay. You don't need me to sign it right now, do you?
Well, I can sign it, give copies to me, if you want, or you want to review it?
I kind of like the chance to review it.
Yep, that's fine.
Okay. Doesn't look like it's too much. Um, how about a low pass permit?
We got the airport people now.
Oh, okay, well, you can take them if they're here.
I feel pretty important.
Well, you can begin whenever you're ready, Roger.
Okay, Roger, right with the airport board, you're ready? Um, we're here last, we were here last month asking for you guys to support two mil levy, and you decided to put it up to a vote for the, of the people. What we're here is to request from, and we've been advised not to put it on the ballot for this year, the, and we're just asking you to take it off the ballot.
I, I don't know, did we actually complete the resolution and do?
It hasn't been signed yet, but I have it, it's me.
You drafted it, but we never really acted on it or anything.
There was a motion to pass it, the second, it did pass.
Okay.
Well, if you guys want to rescind that motion, maybe something you could consider.
Okay.
Is that what you want? Us to rescind that motion?
Yes, please.
We feel it's, uh, right now, the economy isn't really good for people to add taxes, and we're not really well-prepared to put out the information for the people that we'd like them to have before they decide on the vote, too. It's kind of, kind of just short time for us, too, so we, we just thought it would probably be better to just wait.
I know another issue, a couple of issues that came up is, one, uh, I was approached by people from the Hazleton Airport, too, that kind of want to be a part of it. Now that kind of jumbled up, how, you know, if you put it on the ballot for a specific amount, and then all of a sudden, other folks want a part of that amount, now the amount's not even what you wanted, so it doesn't, that would defeat the purpose, one. And then, two, the other question came up, which Marlis and I had talked about, was like, I know when the ambulance and the hospital got their mills, then we had to form a county board, basically to oversee those mills, too. Would we have to do the same thing, would we have to create like a county airport board, which nobody really knew it, and we probably would have had some time to, you know, on the ballot. So I, I kind of agree with them, the fact that it's probably maybe a little sudden change, we don't quite know how it's going to all work, and maybe it's probably best just to wait with it. Um, so, yeah, I guess I don't have a problem with making sure it's done right, so.
If we had talked about the Hilton, to the, the city of Hazleton and the Hilton Board, because I understand that the city of Hazleton is, is donating certain monies to the airport right now.
Right, and so, I mean, when they approached me and started explaining to me, I'm like, that's maybe even a bigger mess than the Litten one. So there was just a lot of confusion on who's responsible for what, and I think...
But there is a little bit of difference, because Litten's right now is federally funded.
Oh, yeah.
So there is a little bit of...
I'm not comparing Hazletons to Litten.
But I agree that they should have some say in it.
Yeah, no, they have, Litten Airport's a much different situation than Hazleton's, no doubt, but I, like we had talked before, how many airports are all of a sudden going to get revitalized in the county when they find out there's ones, and we don't quite know maybe how to divvy them up with the right way to do it, so I, I would be in favor of rescinding it now, just to make sure it's done right later, so. I have a motion to rescind that.
I'll make a motion to, uh, take it off the ballot.
Motion to rescind the resolution that was going to be on ballot, I guess, I'd be ready, because, yeah. Commissioner Holman makes that motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Everly. Is there any more discussion? Not hearing any of those in favor of the motion. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Resolution is rescinded.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to tell you guys, too, I invite you to continue the, the communication, so that way we make sure that we do, you know, get this right, because I mean, I don't think anybody here disagreed that the airport is important, it's just the right way to go about funding it, is probably the best question. So, continued communication on it with us would be appreciated.
You go.
Okay. Thank you, guys, for coming in.
Thank you.
So, on the low pass?
Yep.
I could hear it. Maybe we need a speaker, I don't know, maybe we need a speaker on the table. Did you hear one?
Seems like all the noises in the back.
Yeah, it's all wired directly to this machine, so we can see it, and we want to do it all the time, every, if we don't, if we don't continue, that's a lot.
Right.
Yeah, we tried that portable thing, too, and tried other options, but, but it's very easy to, yeah.
Right.
Okay, Commissioners, um, I just wanted you to provide an update on the low pass. Today, you're going to see about your coming through for five hundred dollars, which is our annual membership to the Western Dakota Energy Association. We pay that every, that's on a yearly basis that we pay that. I also provided you an updated, um, low pass fee schedule. Um, I printed off the Emmett County Permit Count from two thousand sixteen through two thousand twenty-one, and an update count for two thousand twenty-two is included in there also. The total permits issued so far is one thousand one hundred and forty, with eight hundred and ninety-two of these were issued in two thousand nineteen with the wind farm. The total revenue generated from these one thousand one hundred and forty permits is one million sixty-eight thousand two hundred and eighty-four dollars and fifteen cents. Um, the membership responsibility is that the county must designate a contact person during business hours to respond to these permit quid, requests within a reasonable time of one to two hours. Also, the county must provide a designated contact person during non-business hours to respond to permit requests, which is once in the evening, and once or twice per weekend day, if a request is received. Because this was my idea to sign the county up for this, I volunteered to be that designated contact person. A lot of these permits come in over the weekend and on evening hours. I know in two thousand nineteen, I approved three hundred and eighty-one permits, just the month of August alone, and a lot of these were done at home. Just a couple weeks ago, there were three of them that came in on Sunday afternoon. I purchased a new tablet from my cell phone company that I use for approving these permits. I paid for this out of my own pocket, because I use it for personal use only. And I'm bringing all this information for... And I'm bringing all this information forward today because I'm not looking at any type of reimbursement from the county for being this contact person, nor am I going to ask for any salary for doing all this extra work. Being the low-pass person for the county isn't part of my auditor treasure duty, so it is extra work that I do and I'm not being reimbursed for. It's a commitment, especially having the permits come through after working hours and on weekends, but I'm, but I'm going to ask of you, though, is to not cut my salary down next month when you adopt the two thousand twenty-three budget. We paid Pam, the HR person, to do a salary study, which is, which is really needed for the county. And a majority of the employees and department heads are already over the hundred percent of the average salary. I'm only at the seventy-eight percent. Um, you decreased the amount that Pam recommended last year, or at the, at last year, and then also this year, you decreased it at the July meeting, which I'm fine with that decision that you made, you can keep it how it is in the budget right now. Pam listed my position as the auditor finance, it says only one position, and the reason why she listed it as the auditor finance is that is because that's how NDA CO has it listed on their salary survey. And the reason for this is because some of the larger counties have done away with elected county auditors. They don't want their auditor to be elected anymore. So what they did is they appointed their finance managers, and they don't have elected position anymore, and then they also hire like an election official. That's why it's listed as auditor finance on there. I personally feel that I've proven myself by doing this extra work, and like I said, I don't want to get reimbursed for it, I'll continue being that member contact person, but please don't cut my salary down. I, I feel that I've, I'm committed and and I just appreciate that you've proven as it was put in the July budget. Any questions?
We're going to have Pam down before...
I don't know, so, she, you know, she called you at the July meeting. She called in and she went here with you. And some of these permits that I'm doing now, Michael's Construction gets permits, they must be doing things with the pipeline to go to access pipeline. Rock Solid Express has been getting some, I don't know really what they're doing in the county, but they've been getting a lot of permits. Fisher-Sat and Gravel, I just approved a couple of those over the weekend. I think they're setting up to do our crushing, crushing up by Wobom. House movers are coming, they're getting, I got them all getting permits now, whenever they move a house into the county, they know what to go on and apply for these permits. And I think a lot of these truckers, when they're off the road at home in hotels over the weekends, when they're fighting their week, they, they come in all the time. My tablet gives me a message, I go on and I approve those, and I do that all on my own time. You're welcome, and like I said, I don't want to get reimbursed for doing this. I, I wanted the county to get involved with this. I brought in more money than you guys, than the county will ever pay me my whole career here in Littles County. I mean, there's a lot of money, there's a lot of effort that I've done, especially when the wind farm paid. And then some of these wind towers are being removed, are being, the blades are being changed out. They bring in a crane and they change all those blades, there's extra money coming there, too, you'll see, I think it was twelve thousand dollars here in the month of, um... If I can look at this, I think it was just last month, is when it was like twelve thousand or something coming in, I don't even know for sure. Well, that was in two thousand twenty-one, there was twelve thousand, but that one month of August was ten thousand, that's when the wind farm gave me the change out. As for that ten thousand, I don't know.
Well, I'm glad you did that, otherwise we would not have any of that money.
Well, that's what I'm just saying, you know, like I said, I brought in more money than you guys in the county will ever pay me my entire career here with Littles County, so I, I just, I'm just asking that you just don't cut it down, you cut my budget before you cut my... This would be the third time my salary was ever cut here, and I don't appreciate that. If I'm going to do all this extra work, I think, I, I, I feel like you deserve that.
So are you, when you say cut, are you saying the proposed raise we gave for you was cut?
Well, I got cut when I first started here. They cut me down.
Right, like, when we came up with our preliminary budget, are you satisfied with that raise, or you're...
What you did in July?
Yeah.
Yes, when you cut it, I'm fine with that, I'm fine with it in there now.
Okay.
Just don't cut it next month again.
So don't take it down anymore.
Unless you guys want to do this.
I noticed, I noticed, I noticed you were looking at me when you said don't cut it, so I feel like you're targeting me a little bit, I'm not... I understand, Marlo, yes, the load pass permit has been, it's been a huge benefit.
And I, like I said, I don't mind doing it, but I just don't want to, and I, and I don't want to get paid no extra. I'm already, uh, other officials are already at the hundred percent of their average salary, I'm at seventy-eight. Bringing me up to where you guys decided in July, it still won't put me at the hundred percent, but I'm fine with that. I said I'm fine with that, I'm going to do it. Okay?
Thank you again.
Well, I appreciate your information, so...
Okay, thank you for your time.
Yep. Any other input?
Any questions, I'm sorry, any questions?
I think we got it covered, Marlo.
How much money's left in there?
Pardon me?
How much money did we use out of the...
You got the...
You know, I put all the money in there from like the utility permits and from, um, the approach permits and all that. There's still over a million dollars in there, but I did have to take a hundred thousand out and transferred into highway tax last year because we were low on highway taxes. So I transferred a hundred thousand out of there, so there's still over a million dollars in there.
Okay, well, there's really nothing on the agenda that can get moved forward, because everything else has people coming in for it, except maybe extension, if we can have anyone.
What about, um, permits?
Well, we can work on permits, right, but other than that, everything else someone's coming in for, so we can really move it ahead, so the extension would be the only thing we could probably do other than permits, so... We'll move to the building permits for now. You ready, Josh?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. So the first building permit is for Coal Mott to move a thirty-by-seventy-two house on the northeast half of the northeast quarter, section ten, township one thirty-five, range seventy-seven.
Everybody stood there, step by step.
Yeah, you can all look through them here.
But yeah, it's... I've been out there, because it's right on the north side of Mark Schmidt's place, if you're familiar with that, up in Hazelton there, it's it's kind of in the middle of nowhere, really, it's plenty of out of the section lines and stuff. I think Skylar was out there looking at an approach and how that was all going to fit into it, so... But Josh, you looked at it, everything, I remember, everything's good, so... Entertained a motion to approve, table or deny? Motion to approve? Okay, Commissioner Culver makes a motion to approve. There's a second to that.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Everly. Any more discussion on the permit for Coal Mott? Not hearing any, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Building permit approved. Second building permit is for Mark Kramer to erect the seventy-by-one-twenty pool building southeast quarter of section fourteen, township one thirty-one, range seventy-seven. Looks good, but...
Yeah, they tore, tore the barn down, they're just putting it away the barn was.
Yeah, everywhere the little barn was.
Yeah.
So everything's set back ways, and it's good, huh?
That's not bad.
Yeah.
Yeah, it looks like, I remember, like, there was a signature by Larry, yep, it's the landlord. Park must be leasing it, the landlords have signed off, so everything seems to be in order.
I'll make a motion to approve, and I'll second it.
Motion by Commissioner Waikul to approve the building permit, seconded by Commissioner Holm. Is there any more discussion? Not hearing any, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Permit approved. Okay, we have a building permit for Brady Webber to erect a grain bin on the southeast two-point-seven-three acres of the west half of section twelve, township one thirty-three, range seventy-eight. He's kind of got a binside there already, I believe, right, or...
Yeah, there's a binside there, he's just adding it. There's one missing there.
He's adding it behind some letter already, or no, so, yeah, everything looks...
We go, I'll make the motion to approve them.
Motion by Commissioner Everly to approve the permit for Brady Webbers, there's a second.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Holm. Any more discussion? Not hearing any, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Permit approved. And there's a note on here, too, Josh, or Marlo's, to send it to somebody else, too, so...
That's my note.
Okay, well, just so you know. All right, and then the last building permit is for Carol Nice to replace windows in existing home on the northeast quarter, less two-point-five-one acres, section thirty-two, township one thirty-one, range seven-four.
I don't even look at it.
Run well with windows, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I'll make the motion. Do we have to direct the permits for that?
She came in and I told her, I don't think you do, but I said, you want to just do it, you just, you don't have to do anything else.
Yeah, because I think it's under what?
Two thousand.
Two thousand, obviously, I mean, I suppose windows came out, never mind.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Probably can deal with that. Okay, motion by Commissioner Everly to approve the permit for Carol Nice, there's a second.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Waikul, any more discussion? Not hearing any, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Permit approved. The other item here was the, uh, Central Dakota Sixth County Organization Meeting on September thirteenth, which would be Monday, I believe. Or is that on?
Tuesday.
Sure is on Tuesday, yeah.
I'm sure you have Tuesday.
Yeah, that's a week, that's a week, so it's Tuesday.
Yeah, Tuesday.
Labor Day, I mean, that's a lot of work, so, yeah.
I have to carry it in.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not a car driver.
Do you guys have any agenda items that you want to bring up, and then I can have RSVP, because they want RSVP from us?
I won't be able to make that one.
I'm going to go, I'll take the company vehicle, if anybody wants to come with me.
Yeah, I can't answer yet, I have to check.
Call me the day before.
Okay, I can do that.
So our RSVP is just one of them right now? Me, that's it?
Yeah, I don't know. Could we do that utility permit, or what?
I was just thinking about that, I don't know if Skylar wants to weigh in at all, so can Skylar approve the utility permit, or... For Wes Mastel?
I forgot to hear.
That, or we can have, um... Can we call Kasia or something, have them come and do their extension office early?
Want to meet with the DOT? That's our time to meet them. I think that they're regular meetings. This is Monday, October third, you have the first Monday we do. Or Tuesday. That's what we need with the DOT, and then they go over your salary and what's under your money's, I would say.
You did it every year.
Every year, I guess, I would do that all the time.
Yeah, it doesn't say, do you know where the, Wes?
Yeah, Wes was in my office when he was out there, so I know where he's, wants to put it.
Are they boring it under there?
He wants to trench over the section line, which...
Well, we approved, we approved to put up that roof building.
Yep.
That's got to be it.
Yeah, so here's, the roof building would be up here, but he wants, the line runs, he wants to trench across the section line here.
That's how we had, we told him, yeah, let's hit the wall. Did he just want his approval for trenching it, so, did he say we got to hold it?
I'm guessing Skylar, I don't get it.
That would get Skylar questioned.
You know, like, we had talked about before, though, it's these two-track trails, I don't know why I have a problem with trenching across.
Yeah.
I mean, I think the big thing was like our established roads and stuff, you want them more under there.
That's kind of what we talked about, yeah.
Because I've been out on some of these places where they want it.
Well, that's that main section line to go south there.
If, if it is, then we probably want it poured, but that's where I'm at. Like, some of these requests come in, and they're they're hardly two-track trails.
Yeah, but I, I know that one there, that's the main section one that takes south.
Right.
This one has east.
Huh?
This one has east. He wants to put it.
Oh, it's east, okay.
On this section line, that's, barely used.
That's the one where it goes over.
I hate to make these guys bore them when they're just, I mean, they're rough trails, there's no point in that, but as long as they maintain, which with waterline, you're going to, but maintain the depth, that you're not impacting the road dish, you want to put it up, but full wave is kind of...
Yeah, I see your questions.
Okay, take extension if they're ready.
Yes, okay, we have letters for everybody, so...
Yep.
I'll just toss them to you, maybe?
Yeah.
Uh, so we have our legislative, I had one to read it. We have a legislative update, and those of you that, um... or many of you are probably familiar with it before, of every biennium, it's part of the century code that NDAU extension updates the legislature kind of some of the programs that activity...
September twentieth?
September twentieth. We're with Burley County this year due to the redistricting.
Yep.
So it will take place in Bismarck.
Yep.
Um, so we're hoping that at least one of you can go, I mean, two of you could go, and it wouldn't be a quorum, so um, I guess we need an RSVP by Wednesday.
Yeah.
So...
What, tomorrow, Wednesday?
That would be tomorrow, yes.
Yes, it would. We realized it's fairly short notice, but, um, we wanted to make sure we got you guys, um, your invitations and invited you to come up to the legislative update. So if you guys can make it, that would be amazing. There will be a little lunch, um, and then there will be a presentation. There'll be other legislators, commissioners up there from the other districts, um, in all of that area, so...
Here an hour and a half?
Yeah, about an hour and a half, probably, not hopefully super long. So, we hope you can make it. Do, does anybody want to volunteer today?
Well, I'll RSVP, yes, but I can't guarantee I'll make it, but I'd like to attend.
Okay, so Erin? We can take two of you, right, yeah?
Well, I'll plan to attend, but I get legislative updates whether I like it or not, I guess, fine.
Well, this is the extension.
I know, but she usually leads into every phone call I have with my dad, so anyway. But yeah, no, I would like to attend unless it's Bismarck, I would.
Okay.
So I'll RSVP.
Sounds good. Anybody else? That's it?
Okay.
Okay.
We'll put you on our list, Erin, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Well, dang, if that didn't heat up any more time, you know.
I have a thirty-second update if I can address.
Well, we might as well do it, because we're, I mean, I don't want to jump early, because some of these have guests, so I don't...
I just wanted to let you guys know that I am doing, um, driving through the recreational area, looking at our new ordinance that was passed. So just taking pictures and making notations and stuff right now until I get done, then I'll give you guys a list. I did have one person stop me last week and asked what I was doing on my property, and I said, well, all the roads out here are private roads, so you can't tell what would be a public road versus a not public road, so I'm just driving where there's trails to be able to go, but, um... And I don't think he was offended by that, he just wanted to know what I was doing, taking pictures of his property. So, I just wanted you guys to know in case you get any feedback on on that, that I am actually out there doing it.
Well, I think just to kind of add on to that, Denise just kind of asked me how we want to go forward with that, because we made that ordinance change and trying to, you know, do some things differently out there, so... What I told Denise, in my opinion, and kind of talked to Jill a little bit about it, was just go out, try and address anybody that's not in compliance, and then we would probably draft some kind of a reasonable letter, just announcing that we've made an ordinance change and give them time to come into compliance with it, and try and not be the stiff arm of the law, but give everybody reasonable time to try and take care of it. So that was, so the main goal is to just identify if there are any issues, and then from there, we'll see how it goes.
Yeah, it was a dual role for me, as much as getting familiar with the roads out there and what is where, and so and that's what I explain most to everybody is, you know, I'm just out there trying to do my job and knowing what I'm assessing and what not, and where things are, so... Updating pictures and taking a look at any possibilities.
Okay. Thanks, Denise. Thank you.
Why do you think the mic is added to the... Well, that's the one thing, because the speakers are all in the back, so you... Well, that's the one thing, because the speakers are all in the back, so you can turn it. We could hear it better if you just turned it. Well, we're in a conundrum.
Can you guys hear Commissioner's phone? Erin? We need to take a break, because this still has that three-hour limit, so I have to stop at a certain point anyways.
Well, why don't we take a five-minute recess here, if you've got to answer a phone call or use the restroom or something, and then we'll come back, and then, um, I mean, the Whirlinders are here, we could probably start with them and see if, of course, I hate to jump ahead of Donovan, too, because I'm guessing he's coming in, so Donovan's coming in. Well, let's, uh, let's take a five-minute recess here, and then we'll come back. Why, that's what, I mean, because I know it was mentioned with the Whirlinders friends, it's one of them.